Raise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. We've got a short agenda tonight. We are going to go out of order. Ms. McIntyre is going to come at 8:00, so we want to take advantage of her attendance at last month's hearing regarding Herrick Road. So we're actually going to open with the new public hearing of Joseph Lynch and Margaret Lynch at 18 Conduit. Mr. Clerk, if you would.
Notice this by giving that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the, what is this place?
At the School Administration Building.
At the School Administration Building. At what was the address here?
I don't know.
At an address unknown?
566 Main Street.
Five what?
66 Main Street.
566 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. It's still North Andover, right? On Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 7:30 PM, to all parties interested in the petition of Joseph W. Lynch and Margaret A. Lynch for property at 18 Conduit Street, map 24, parcel 001, North Andover, Mass. 01845, the R4 zoning district. First, the applicant is requesting a special permit to the town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2Q, for a family suite in the R4 zoning district. A special permit is required under section 195-4.2Q of the zoning bylaws. Second, the applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, table two dimensional requirements to replace a one-car garage with a two-car garage and build a second floor addition in the R4 zoning district. A variance from section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, table two dimensional requirements of zoning bylaws, for one side setback in the R4 zoning district to replace the one-car garage with a two-car garage and build a second floor addition. Side setback proposed is 12.2 feet. The required side setback per table two is 15 feet. The relief needed is 2.8 feet. A variance from section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, table two dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws, for one rear setback in the R4 zoning district to replace the one-car garage with the two-car garage and build a second floor addition. Rear setback proposed is 21.7 feet. The required side setback per table two is 30 feet. The relief needed is 8.3 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for your review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. It's Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And Friday from the hours of 8:30 AM to 11:30.
Mr. Clerk, thank you very much for the reading.
You're welcome.
With that, if we, are the Lynch's?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Just for the record, my name is Joseph Lynch. And I'm the applicant with my wife, Margaret. And thank you for reading that as well because it took away probably two-thirds of my presentation. So I don't need to explain too much of that away. But the genesis of this is really twofold that we're trying to accomplish. And first is that we have a 1940's vintage single-star car garage which has functioned as a shed for the past 25 years. We've lived there. One car wouldn't fit in it and it's literally caving in. And the second is that after a couple of years of wrestling with my dad's situation, living in Florida on his own, he's come to realize that he wants to move back home and finish his final years here with us. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. In doing that, we looked at our existing lot and you would think that it's nothing irregular about a rectangular lot, but given the layout of the floor plan of the existing house and where it sits within the site and the fact that the site slopes from left to right going, as you're looking at it and going down the hill, you know, to the right, the change of grade, the alternative of looking at putting this on the right side where no variance would have been necessary, it's just not feasible. It's just the floor plans don't match together and the grade elevations don't match. It would make the house look like a big box. So what we did is look at the options of putting it to the left. And in looking at that, what we didn't want to do is make it look like a box. So our house now is a Cedar Shingle house. I'm not sure if you have photos in the packet or not, but it's Cape Cod style. It's very cottage-style, various roof heights, various wall reliefs that center back and forth and have juts and jogs and little L's. And we're looking to accomplish the same thing with the addition to give it some character. To do that, we pushed the garage back almost six feet, 5.8 feet. And in doing that, we were able to retain natural light in one of the bedrooms, windows on the first floor of the existing house, and then aligned the doorway, stairway up to the in-law, family suite, through what was a window in a second room, which now becomes simply a doorway so we can visit back and forth. That's what really necessitated the back-line request for variance. And the width of the house, what we had to do, what we strived to do and ended up doing sign-wise, was widen out the stairway to accommodate a stair lift and widen out the bathroom in some of the hallways and doorways on the second story in order to accommodate walking needs initially and then, you know, hopefully nothing worse beyond that. But give it some ability to have grab rails and wider toilets and things to use for an elderly person. So to do that, it went from a standard 24-foot footprint out to a 30-foot footprint. We've, in addition to the notices I had to make, and we're reallocated, we're literally 306 feet away from Village Green, so I had to hit all those folks as well. Those notices went out officially, but what I also did is visited my immediate neighbors and friends in the neighborhood. We've lived in the neighborhood 28 years and we visited them to a person. They're all very supportive of their project and, you know, I answered most of the questions they had and most everybody spoke that they'd come to the meeting and I urged them that the Red Sox might be in the playoffs and they probably would want to stay home. It didn't work out. So what we've done though, in working with those dimensions, what I wanted to point out is why I think that's a hardship and why that may be something that you might want to consider, is that, you talked about the room alignment and the way the entry hall to the garage and up the stairway aligns with that window, it really is a good combination of our privacy, my dad's privacy, and the immediacy that if we need it, especially for, you know, family dinners and whatnot, he has a support mechanism in place. He's 84. Hopefully, we've got another five or six or more years ahead of him. And, you know, the goal is to have him move in next April when he comes back north from Florida. On the hardship end of it, the topography, we talked about affecting the inability to line floors up in the garage properly on the right-hand side, works well on the left-hand side. But what's more subtle, and I'll explain, is that on the existing left-hand side, the uphill side, we have an awful water problem in our basement. Ledge is quite shallow in the entire lot. It's worse on the right-hand side. But on the uphill side, the water seems to follow the ledge line, hits a block wall and it's been, you know, everything from a big flood and severe storms all the way to just a nuisance most of the time. Putting the addition on this side allows us to, you know, get proper drainage in place as part of the project at a minimum cost and help solve that problem. Variance on the rear yard setback, I think it's important to point out that we're really only missing by three and a half inches to the building wall proper. And it's really 21.7 feet to a suite-level porch, basically a single porch. Granted, it's the bylaw requires that, you know, get a variance for it, but it's not like there's a stock wall right up against that line that much closer. It really is only the result of the porch. And we did that too, again, for privacy, that, you know, if Dad wants to get up and, you know, have his coffee out on the porch in the morning, he's able to do that and just let them relax on his own without having to come all the way downstairs and use our porch. I think that's pretty much it on the hardship issues. The, I think the architectural styling of what you've seen, coupled with the styling of the existing house with the Cape Cod style, is very consistent to the house itself. It's consistent to the neighborhood. Most of my neighborhood is duplexes, you know, not two-family, but, you know, duplex condo units. We're one of, only a handful of single-family homes. And so I don't think this would be a request out of character with those. The more recent, the older houses that were built in the 80's and early 90's are the big boxes that aren't very appealing. The ones they've built most recently near us, across the street, are ones with different wall cuts and different roof lines and interesting, you know, changes in heights in roof. And that's what we're trying to accomplish as well. So I think it's pretty consistent with what the neighborhood is. And I'm certainly here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you for that. I'm just going to check a few boxes. I think I heard them in your presentation. But just for the sake of clarity, just for the sake of clarity and ensuring that we touch them, you know, the bylaw specific, I'm sure you've been there, that we've got to continue, this has to be, continue to be a single-family home. That the in-law, the family suite is only for a relative in the first order here. And it sounded like it was your father, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, my dad.
So we checked that box.
And we realized that, you know, after he dies, that it just really reverts to an area that when my kids come to visit for holidays, it's a place where they can stay as well.
Right, it's not an apartment.
Single utility, neglected to mention that, when adding more soil, more water. Contrary to popular opinion, we are converting to gas, only due to heating and cooking loads.
Too soon, too soon.
Yeah, we're not splitting utilities.
And how big is the home currently?
It should be on the plan. If it's not, it's definitely in the application. I believe it's 1,890 square feet, just shy of 2,000.
And then when the family suite is going to be how large?
Well, 900 square feet for the garage and 900 square feet for the family suite.
So that's a place where we're going to fall down. I'm sure you've been here, so I'm hoping that you have some kind of an explanation or how we're going to get around it, that the bylaw requires that the family suite be not more than 25% of the existing square footage. So if you've got 1,900, call it 2,000 for the ease of...
So the existing square footage, could I add the 20 by 22? Actually, it's not 20. It's 18 by 22, existing garage that it's going to be replacing.
Needs to be living space.
So if we're adding, so 900 square feet over the 1,900.
You're, we're over half.
It would be almost 30.
That would be half. If you have an 1,800 square foot house and you're adding 900, that would be a multiple of .5.
Yeah, let me check the dimensions because I am doing this from memory and I know we, the engineer calculated that. Just bear with me so I can see on which form they got entered in on. That would be on the special permit application probably, right?
If we're talking about just the top floor here, that's going to be substantially less than 900, I think.
No, it's 900 on the first.
Right, but the first floor is going to be all garage.
Right, the family suite is 900, which is not 900 on the actual house.
Oh, I see, 900 on the first, 900 on the second. Okay, got you.
The house itself is only 1,800.
Yeah, I'd have to check, I'd have to get back to you on that because the application here says existing buildings, 712 and 552 for 1264. I believe that's only the first floor. The house is much bigger than that, so there's, I don't have the answer for you, but I know it's up near that 2,000 square foot number. But I can get you that answer.
So what the bylaw is trying to do is to avoid, you know, a parity of units. It wants, essentially wants a subordinate unit, wants the in-law to be subordinate. And if we're at 900 square feet for the subordinate unit, 1,200 square feet for the principal unit, then we really don't have material subordination in size and presence.
So it's 25% is what the requirement is?
The maximum.
Maximum, correct. And it's 25% of the existing and of habitable area or enclosed area? Habitable area.
Gross floor area of the principal unit, so we don't include garages or...
So if I don't count the existing garage, I wouldn't count the new garage. Is that cool?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you did the application, did anybody at the building department inform you of this? Or were you on your own to discover this?
It's my first time through. They were very helpful in the building department. And I don't think we, I don't think I realized, I don't think there was a problem, so I don't think...
The building inspector never picked up on this? I mean, you're way over. It's not like you even closed. I mean, you're way over. I mean, no one picked up on this before you spent all of the money notifying all of these abuddists. Okay, because I saw the list of abuddists here and I don't know what it cost you. But I think, just think, somebody from the town of North Andover...
I think Justin Mail is approaching $1,000.
Whatever the cost is, okay, I saw the lengthy list of abuddists. Nobody from the town of North Andover informed you that you had no prayer at getting this through the way it's currently?
I want to, they were very helpful, very, very helpful.
They weren't that helpful if you're here on an application like this.
I think the square footage reported is probably incorrect. And I hate to say it, I want to go back and recalculate that because I don't believe it was an issue. I think we were under it.
Yeah, but nobody picked up on the building department? I'll get the written text.
I think they did. No, they were very helpful.
Mr. Lynch, Mr. Cusia.
On, and I don't know what page it is, it's on the second page. This right here? It's saying upper floor 633 square feet. Is it possible that the application?
No.
For the special permit was filled out wrong?
No, the architectural drawings that I bought online are for a 26 by 28 square foot footprint. And it was, once we blew the hallways and doorways out wider and the bathroom out a little bit wider, did it become 30 by 30?
I mean, I'm looking at page three, three or four.
Of the application, Mr. Cusia?
Of the application, that shows the written text.
Yeah, it does not look like it's 30 by 30, but...
Right.
Yeah, it appears to be 26 by 28 with some cutouts.
I hate to say it, if I had a scale here, I could measure off on the existing building, but I don't have one with me. But I, I mean, it's a 1,200 square foot house and if you, it's easily double that.
I'm only going by 7/8, existing building, the square footage. 1264, proposed building, 1,800.
Yeah, I don't believe it's 1264.
Well, you said you want to add 900 square feet, right? On a building that's 12 or four. I'm only going by the numbers that are...
No, no, I see that. I know exactly what you're asking. I believe that there's an error in the square foot reporting in the existing building footprint.
You want...
Proposed building, I believe, is correct, with the exception of it counts the garage area. So we've, you've clarified to me that it's only habitable area. So it's only 900 on the proposed.
Yeah.
Do you want to continue?
So I would need to be 25%, so I would need to be no more than four times that on total floor area, habitable floor area existing.
So perhaps my suggestion would be that we continue this for a month. Maybe you can find, maybe there are calculations that will be more supportive of the endeavor. And the alternative, you know, you could certainly file for another variance to get beyond, you know, this 25% kind of thing as well. That may be an avenue that you'd seek.
Well, as you will, the numbers come off too, of course. I mean, if it's necessary, then it's necessary. But if it's not necessary, I'll come back with supporting information to clarify it.
That makes an awful lot of sense.
And double-check the number on the size of your existing space too, just because like looking at the floor plan here, it looks like it's a little bit less than 900, probably. Given what you have on this page.
Yeah, again, just for clarity, that was a package I just bought on the internet. It is in fact a 26 by 28 foot.
Right, which is what it has here.
Correct.
And that's seven something, I just calculated, 728. And then plus 80 for the deck. That's still not quite 900. So you're a little under that.
So, but what we are proposing is 30 by 30 for the...
I see, so this is not your actual plan?
Correct. It's that plan, it just simply enlarged to get me the larger doorways. The site plan is correct. The site plan shows the footprint. The plan simply has exactly the same envelope, just a little bit bigger. And where the difference is made up is in hallways, doorways, and the bathroom.
So then it sounds like it's just registering for me now. I apologize, I should have said something earlier. So to, let's fast forward, let's assume a positive result and we're going to be approving this thing at some point in the future. And like I said, just assuming, we've still got some, we've got a row to hoe here first. But whenever we approve something, we approve it in accordance with the plans and illustrations that are, you know, presented with the application. And in this case, we wouldn't be able to do that kind of thing. So to the extent that you can get, you know, another package perhaps, that can be illustrative of a 30 by 30 rather than whatever the, you know, the out-of-the-box numbers are.
Those have been in the works, so yes, I think if we're talking about one month continuous, certainly we can be done within a month.
Brilliant.
Yeah. And the, is the deck area also included as habitable area? Because you made reference to the deck.
No.
It's not, okay.
So just to kind of sum up, it sounds like, Mr. Lynch, that the homework is we're going to double-check the calculation, perhaps get more specificity or accuracy. The second item is if we're still outside of the requirements of the bylaw, that perhaps you'll be applying for more relief and other variance. And the third is that you'll get a, you know, you'll revise the plan so that they're more reflective of the application itself.
That's what's on my list, yes.
Brilliant, that sounds good to me.
Can I have a question?
What we're going to, excuse me, what we're going to go next is, I'm just going to invite the gallery up to speak because we don't want anybody to have wasted their, necessarily their nights. If anybody has something to say, we're going to invite them up to offer their inputs, ask any questions.
They use these microphones for that?
Yeah, yep. So is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Yes.
Come on up.
Okay, my name is Robert Norbeido.
One more time your last name, sir?
Norbeido, N-O-R-B-E-D-O. And I own the duplex next door, 3638, the two-story. I don't have any problem with his plans. I know he has problems with you, but I don't have any. The only problem I have is that I have a sunken driveway. And I want to make sure that the grading is such so that I don't get any water coming into the driveway. Okay, because I know he had a water problem. And the last time, some bushes were removed and I ended up with water in my driveway, which caused a certain amount of concern on my part. So that's the only concern that I have. Other than that, I'm good with his plan.
I appreciate that. We often get those comments. North Andover is awfully wet, so we're...
Yeah, I don't want to be as...
We're fully...
Any more than I'm doing now.
We're fully sensitive, so when Mr. Lynch comes up, then we'll ask him again to perhaps make some plans to control the...
Because I was concerned if there is no other meeting, that I wouldn't be heard. And I do want to make sure that that's a requirement on my part, that the grading is such that I don't get any extra water in my driveway.
Understood, and we want to make sure anybody who wants to be heard does get heard. So I appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Let me say this, hopefully the applicant just heard you.
Is there anyone else in the gallery that wishes to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Herb Stacy. I'm actually, I reside directly across the street, 1921 Conduit. And just here to support them and let them know that they're great people. And I think what they're doing is wonderful. I'm probably the most impacted by it, other than the driveways, but, you know, directly across the street. Come to know them. I'm the newest person in the neighborhood, I think. Wonderful people, and I think what they're doing with their dad is phenomenal. As a retired police officer, I know we... As a retired police officer, I know we, currently I do all the construction, concrete, civil, UMass Lowell. So I know at the end of the day, we have laws, rules, regulations. But to me, it comes down to family. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Seeing and hearing none, I would invite the Lynch's, would you come on up just for a minute so we can get it on the record?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can respond to Mr. Norbeido's concern that he raised. So it's exactly that reason that we talked about the drainage of why the addition is not being proposed on the right side, which is the side of where his driveway is, it's actually on the other side. We have lived there twenty-eight years, almost twenty-nine years, and we haven't done any landscaping, pulled any shrubs out of there in all of those years. So I, I'm not sure what he was referring to, maybe it's he thinks I'm a different neighbor. But that's exactly the reason and the proof of the hardship that I was trying to explain of why we wanted to put it on the left side to better control the drainage.
So what your, this thirty by thirty footprint, is that going on the, the old garage? The old garage is coming down?
Yes, the old garage is coming down.
And how, what's the size of the old garage, is it also thirty by thirty?
No, it's shown on the, on the site plan, it's, I believe it's eighteen by twenty-two.
So we are, just for the purposes of this part of the conversation, we are going to be increasing the, the area of the impervious surface, not insignificantly. Which means that my, my suggestion would be to come back with perhaps dry wells or some other rainwater mitigation.
Oh yes, exactly, I neglected to mention it, my thought was to collect all the roof water and the driveway and actually get it into a system and actually use it as part of an irrigation system. So I was hoping to do a reuse, capture reuse system.
You're way ahead of me, Mr. Lynch. All right, so if you could bring some, bring some paperwork that would show some kind of a design or indication as to how that, how that would be placed or operate.
Yep, very good.
Other than that, I'll ask the board, any other comments, questions from the board?
I make a motion to continue it till the next meeting, which is- I wish to make a motion to continue this to November twelfth.
Motion made, is there a second?
This is assuming they signed the proper time release? Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries.
I just, sorry. I was distracted.
I think Steve was technically voting for that one.
Welcome back, Ellen. Yeah, she could come a long time ago, I got to give her credit. All right, with, with that, we are going to reopen the, the hearing for Thomas Sarico for property at seventeen Herrick Road. Would you all come on up? Hi, everybody. Welcome back, and why don't you all tell us where we were and where we've gone in the last several weeks?
Again, Tom Sarico, sixteen sixty-five Great Pond Road. We all set? Okay. You know, in response to the comments from the neighbors and the board at the last meeting, and out of respect for those, for those comments and concerns, I resubmitted, and I think it was pursuant to at least some general guidance from, from some members of the board to rethink the approach and try to come up with something that was a little bit more consistent with the neighborhood, if not just in lot size, but also in, in home design. And so that's what we've done, we've gone back and looked at an alternate lot line or a new lot line adjustment, moving the lot line on, on the, on the subject lot closer to the existing home, which you see in the plans. And I, I think, I'm pretty sure that, that this is, if this is something that moves, moves forward, would probably require some modification or additional applications as well, because again, as we talked at the last meeting, my goal, my intent was to try to minimize the number of requests, minimize the number of, you know, variances and, and exceptions, if you will. But with this plan, there are a few more exceptions, one being the setback to the garage of the existing lot. And I can get into a little bit more detail if you'd like me to, or I can wait and respond to, to other comments or, or direction from the board.
I think it may be useful for you to kind of recite the changes, if you can.
The, primarily, the change, yeah, I didn't realize that when it came to the last meeting, that we didn't have the electronic displays, so I did my best to, to bring something that could be shown here. The seventeen Herrick Road, which was a much smaller lot, you see the dashed line that shows on the plan, the response that I provided to the input and comments that we got last time was to shift that lot line over here towards the existing house, making lot seventeen or seventeen Herrick Road larger, more consistent with the neighborhood, and taking a little bit obviously away from the other lot, which is still consistent with the neighborhood. In fact, just to give you a little bit of an idea, you know, last time I threw out a lot of numbers, a lot of, a lot of averages with the intent of trying to inform, I think it may have been maybe not doing exactly that. So I thought it would be good to have it in the visual here. This revision to the lot line and to the, to the layout would, when we consider this twenty-six lot area to be the core neighborhood, and again, anything can be the core neighborhood, it's just, this seems like the most appropriate, the closest area to consider, there's twenty-six lots in that core area, these being the Gibbs properties right here. When we consider those twenty-six properties, with the new, with the new lot layout, the Gibbs existing home that we're rebuilding, as you know, would be the fourth largest lot still out of those twenty-six, after the revision. The seventeen Herrick Road, the subject of this initial application, would still be the eleventh largest lot of the twenty-six. And each of one of these is a map and parcel right from the assessor's records showing the map and parcel in the area of those homes, the area of those lots in descending order. So obviously very consistent with the neighborhood in that regard. The other, I think probably major revision was a, was a plan, I don't know if it was a board member or if it was-
Was it a boss?
Was it? Okay. That really, that really, that really did stick with me, and in a good way and a bad way. So I'm going to refer to this as the Sound of Music House, as an alternative.
That works? I appreciate the redo.
Okay. It's a Dutch gambrel, consistent, again, with what's in the neighborhood. There are, and these are just random, not random pictures, but a number of photographs of the neighborhood. These are all Dutch gambrels that are in the neighborhood, two stories. This house that's proposed is eighteen hundred and eighty square feet of living space. There's also a mix of other two-story colonials, some new or newer, some a little bit older, probably sixties vintage, something like that. And other bungalow and Cape style homes as well that are a little bit lower, lower profile that are mixed in the, in the neighborhood. All of these homes are in that, what I call the core neighborhood of those twenty-six lots. Again, so trying to drive towards a more consistent look and feel of the neighborhood. The interesting thing, and I know somebody made a comment, again, I don't know if it was the board, if it was from the neighborhood, but, you know, the, I really do understand the reason for zoning. And in terms of maintaining a certain aesthetic, a certain level of open space and elbow room and comfort and quality of life for everybody. And that, that comes from lot area, it comes from lot frontage, it comes from setbacks, it comes from height, it comes from a lot of different things. But as a point of reference, if you expand the look of, the look into this, this neighborhood, there is no lots in this core that have the required area for an R4 lot. There's none. These do, as you spread out a little bit further, you start to find an occasional lot that has the twelve thousand five hundred, which is a little more than a quarter of an acre, some people think it's eleven thousand three hundred and forty, it's actually twelve thousand five hundred, it's twenty-nine percent of an acre, but, and then again, sort of if you go beyond that, you can start to find more and more that comply. But in this general area, this is consistent, in terms of size, in terms of dimension. This, this proposed home, and this, this is a, I don't know if it's completely true, but, because we can't rely on the assessor's maps entirely. But it appears that it would probably be the only home in the neighborhood that complies with setbacks. And again, just as a, as a, as a point of reference for clarity, most of the homes in the neighborhood are built closer to either the front side or rear setback than is allowed in the neighborhood currently. So again, just trying to put perspective on the appropriateness of what's being proposed. I think that's most of what the changes are, lot size and home design.
And so the, the result of this, does it change the roster of relief needed?
Yes, it does.
And can you detail that for us?
Well, it, there would be no, both of these parcels are non-conforming, the vacant lot as well as the existing house on its lot, they're non-conforming. Again, none of the, none of the lots in this, in the zone have twelve thousand five hundred square feet in this, in this specific neighborhood. So in this case, and this may have been an oversight initially, the, if we're changing the lot line, then we're, then we need a variance, because we're, we're, we're increasing, if you will, the, the non-conformity on the existing lot. We're trying to bring them both, again, this was our perception of what was requested or at least the guidance we were getting, trying to bring, bring them both into a little bit more compliance with the neighborhood. They'll never be in compliance with the zone, just as anything else in the neighborhood is not compliant with the zone. So it, in terms of the other relief, there'd be, there'd be that area variance for, for the existing lot and house, there would be a setback variance required because we'd be down to, I think, seven and a half or so feet to the garage on that lot now, we were trying to keep it compliant, but again, just in keeping, you know, scope and scale and, and elbow room, a little bit, a little bit more consistent. And frontage would, would be affected on both of them at that point too, Paul. So, I mean, I think we'd have to look through, I'd want to, I'd want to take a good hard look and make sure we cover all of those things, but we'd be looking at area on both, we'd be looking at frontage, and we'd be looking at a side lot setback for the garage.
Not a rear one? You don't have the dimensions for the rear, for the garage, for the rear of the lot?
Yeah, well, it's a pre-existing, it's a pre-existing condition, I mean, does that, if we changed the lot, does that-
Yeah, you're increasing the non-conformity and you're-
But not relative to that item?
Yeah, you're increasing the non-conformity of this, of that lot B, are you calling it?
Lot B.
So you're increasing that non-conformity, so you're going to have to request variances.
From anything that's non-conforming on it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you're changing, you're making a change.
Right, but we're not changing that, that non-conformity item.
But that is a structure, so you're going to have to request relief of that side setback from seven point eight.
On the side, yes.
But I don't know what's the back.
Well, the back is probably twenty.
Don't know that, it's not on the plan.
Yeah, no, because I didn't realize that that was-
A structure.
That was, well, no, I knew it was a structure, but since that is not an element of the non-conformity that we're, that we're altering, I didn't think that was-
But you're changing the lot line, so you're changing the non-conformity of the, you're changing this lot line.
Correct, the side lot line.
Yes.
But not the rear lot line?
But not the rear.
But he's, the whole, the whole structure would be non-conforming, would be non-conforming.
Yeah, but what you're saying is the seven point eight, by moving the lot line, it increases this structure of non-conformity.
Well, then if that's the case, and I would never, in fact, I'm surprised by that to tell you, even as many of these applications and processes I've been through, I didn't realize that if you, if you change even a-
I don't know for sure, we were trying to get some guidance from-
Yeah.
Because you might even have to apply for another application for that lot.
Oh, we definitely have to.
Okay.
Oh, that, that would definitely have to.
To have another legal notice and the whole thing?
We would definitely have to, so this is, this is, this is-
The pre before, this is the pregame?
Well, this is an evolving discussion, you know, you know, respectfully evolving, not intended to be conclusive, we know that now.
Okay.
You know, so that's, that's, again, trying to look for a direction, look for, you know, a cooperative sort of a way of doing something that, that makes sense.
Mr. Sarico, am I saying your name correctly?
Yeah, that's good, close enough.
So if you, so if you just knock the garage down, problems go away?
Well, no, because actually, because-
I mean, did I use the garage?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, but if, if, if Ellen is correct, then, then, you know, the front setback is is non-conforming. And we'd have to ask for, I mean, everything, you know, again, every lot in this neighborhood has non-conformity. Anything that needs to be done for any, I mean, if, if anything gets changed, then you'd have to get a variance, I, I don't-
The general rule is if you're increasing the non-conformity, then you have to apply for the variance. If you're not, then you're within it.
Right.
So I don't know here by changing a lot line, if you're increasing the non-conformity of the lot.
We're increasing it in one regard, yes, but we're not increasing it with regard to the, to the currently existing rear setback or the front setback, those are existing. We're not changing those elements. So it's a legal question that maybe, maybe town, town council probably has to answer that question. But, you know, my assumption would be, and I, and again, it is an assumption, that we're not altering that, that element of non-conformity. We're only, we're only talking about the things that we're now, I mean, we're not increasing the non-conformity from the rear setback. We're not altering that at all.
But again, creating your own hardship by changing the lot is like such, it's just such a gray area for me, I mean, I've been doing this for a while, as you have as well. And lot lines and changing it and ownerships of three lot lines is just one of those-
Yeah, I mean, it's an, it's a question that needs to be answered, of course. And, you know, but if that, if that's required, then, then we'd have to ask for a variance for, from all, like anybody, anybody in the neighborhood who's putting on a deck and encroaching on the side, side setback more than they were, probably should have had a variance for their area because it doesn't comply, and it's by the same, by the same token, if you're, if you're altering one element of the non-conformity, does that bring all of the non-conformities into question? Because if it does, every lot in this neighborhood, if they ever apply for a deck, patio, shed, for a side or rear or front lot line clearance, then they should also be applying for area and frontage variances too.
I'm pretty sure they do.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, so.
Yeah, so, well, that's a question we can get answered, yeah.
I, I don't know, but I've, I've heard that we're going to get that, get that explored. As a, as a person who just exercises a little bit of common sense, which is a dangerous thing to do on a zoning code, it would, it would strike me as odd, I share your surprise, if, if moving a side, if, if increasing a side setback problem triggers all the other setbacks, that would surprise me, but I've been surprised by the code a dozen, dozen times, you know, a day, for heaven's sakes.
And the reason we have courts is because attorneys don't always agree, so, I mean, you know, I mean, this, it's interpreted, it's probably precedent somewhere, so we'll have to find that out. But anyway, I think, again, this was- But anyway, I think, again, this was an attempt to bring all of the comments into consideration, you know, try to make it more palatable, more reasonable, more consistent with the neighborhood. Again, I think, you know, and I was joking about the house, but the house is definitely dramatically, dramatically nicer and no larger.
Just kind of an in summary kind of thing, because I'd love to put things in boxes, and I always trip over the box that I make there, but I think I heard you say that this, the new plan that you've put before the board, the lot A, which is the new structure, is conforming but for frontage and lot area, so all of.
All the setbacks would be compliant. In fact, that's what I was getting towards, again, trying to work pretty hard with design and layout and space and in two dimensions, fitting that nice-looking home, you know, onto that lot, which is now a very typical lot in the neighborhood.
Understood, but I'm getting confused. I just want to make sure that the, I think you answered the question, and then we, then we get derailed and I lose track of things.
Okay.
Which is that, if I'm hearing you're right, then lot A, the new structure is conforming as per all setbacks, the only relief that would be required had this, if this continues, is lot area and frontage.
Correct.
And then if we move over to lot B, the existing structure, the only thing that is changing, which may trigger other setbacks, as Ms. McIntyre is pointing out, but the only thing that's changing is we are increasing the non-conformity of the side setback for the garage.
When the front setback, when the frontage changes on because the lot line's moved over?
No, front setback doesn't change at all, no.
So that's what we're going to find out.
Or the lot B, frontage. Frontage. Frontage and area, frontage, area, side lots, setback.
Okay.
Paul, to clarify, unless, as Ellen mentioned, unless that triggers something that.
There's only two things, the lot, frontage.
And area.
And the lot area.
And the side setback for the garage.
Oh, and the side setback for the garage.
That's correct.
And you'll have to see how far, if you think it's 20, I think the, what's the.
Setback's 30, the requirement is 30.
Okay.
But I don't think it's 30. I mean, you know, we'll confirm that, and then we'll have to, we'll have to have a finding, you know, by town council or by an attorney who's been through this before, which I'm sure I can find one.
Any questions from the board regarding setbacks design? Anything is on the table? If there are no questions, then I will certainly invite the gallery up for comment.
I just have one quick question. So if you turn over with the lot line, you had a map of the lot lines, I think on the other side of the, that one right there? Yep. So these two lots would mirror the two lots behind it then? The new creation with the new lot?
Yeah, no, the print is really small on the assessor's maps, but I think those are numbers 12 and 13. 12 and 13, again, are right here. That's a map of parcel numbers on, on that 16. 12 and 13 are right here. They were actually exactly in between these other two lots. That's great, I mean, I'd have to add them up to see what essentially got in the full in terms of size.
Yes, can I say something? Bill Gibbs, I feel the same way about the two houses in front of our lots. They kind of match up as well, not just behind, but in front as well.
Oh, across the street. Okay, across the street, all right.
In all likelihood, again, in this, in this, in this zone, as I think everybody knows, these areas were developed and built long before zoning was taken into account. Typically, the only lots that comply with street frontage are corner lots because you come along two streets, otherwise, the majority of them do not.
Is there anything else from the board?
No, really.
All right, then if you could cede the, cede the front, front seats. Anyone from the gallery that wishes to be heard, come on up.
Hi, I'm Jen Fraser, and I live at 25 Herrick Road. So I think one of these is my house. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that were made at the previous meeting, and from what I can tell as far as my point of view and how it affects me, and I'm the opposite of you, I've never been through this before, so I can see that lines were moved on the piece of paper, but as far as where the actual house is going to be, for me, nothing has changed. It's still sort of as close as it possibly can be to my property, so even though the line on the paper was changed, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference to me personally. The existing house, you know, the existing house that's being built is obviously still exactly where it was, as is the garage. So maybe the lot is bigger, but the structures are in the exact same place. So for me, that's a little troubling. It continues to be a really large house on a small piece of land, one of the largest in the neighborhood. It's bigger than my house. It's already a really densely populated area, which is the reason for the bylaws, it's why they're put in place. They were in place when the property was purchased, and I just really hope that they are respected. Thank you.
Hello again, Mark Creedy, 18 Lyman Road, and a butter to the proposed home.
You're behind it?
We're right directly behind it, yeah. You know, I just want to thank Bill, Lisa, and Tom. I think the proposal is a much more beautiful house than what had originally been proposed. I think, you know, I think we all realized how ludicrous the original proposal was, and I think, you know, I was compelled to speak that night. I think this counterproposal, you know, the home is, you know, a Dutch Gambrel, I think, you know, one of my neighbors who can't be here tonight, you know, had given that feedback, you know, why isn't it more consistent with the homes in the neighborhood? So, you know, the issue's not the home, it's a beautifully proposed home. I saw that it was initially planned back in March 22, 2019, which preceded our last meeting, which gave me some pause. You know, I think what I want to talk about today, and something that Tom said really struck a note with me, none of the homes in the neighborhood conform to the current bylaw. So why is that? You know, it's a historic library district, and you heard from Jen, the overcrowding and, you know, sort of the overdeveloped aspect of this neighborhood is already very clear, and I can give you some evidence of that. So the 12,500 was put in place, maybe ask the question, was it to confirm that no new homes would ever be built in this neighborhood ever again? Only one home has been built in this neighborhood since 1960, I believe, and I think I'm going out on a limb there, but, and that's the home on the corner of Sillsby and Lyman, that was initially a renovation, and then they decided the foundation was too unstable, they had to redo the whole house. And it's a beautiful house in the neighborhood, it's very disproportionate for the neighborhood, it sticks out like a sore thumb, it's a beautiful home for those homeowners. And, you know, a fine addition to the neighborhood, they had the land. But let me get to the point, the 12,500, again, it's the bylaw, and I think it was designed, A, to protect the community from overdevelopment and overcrowding, and also, you know, consider that question of maybe it was put in place so that no new homes would be developed and added in this area. And the reason I bring that up again is that when I had simply a 400-square-foot addition to my home, which didn't need any easements or didn't need any variances, I remember the town engineering department giving me grief about it, and you mentioned it earlier, about this impervious surface. They said this is already a densely populated area, there's added impervious surface, what are we going to do about stormwater drainage? You know, oh my goodness, and I researched the whole neighborhood. Apparently, the town had gone around to basically pipe everyone into the stormwater catch basin out of their pump pumps and so forth, because it was so densely populated. So it's interesting to me that they gave me such a hard time, about 400 square feet, and now we're going to drop a 2,000-square-foot house within that same radius. So that was pretty interesting to me. You might want to follow up with the town engineering department. There may be some additional steps after this. So as Jen pointed out, they're only observing the minimum setbacks, and yes, that's within the table requirements, but it's still just the minimum, and the home will feel a bit squeezed. I do invite you all, if you haven't already, to just visit the space before making a blind decision based upon a bunch of numbers. I think just getting a visual is important in terms of what is being asked here. And I do consider, I do ask that when you consider making your decision or at the time of voting, you know, ask if you're, the board is really protecting and preserving a historic community and agreed upon bylaws, or really, you know, again, the interests of the Gibbs family and the one home builder. You know, there seems to be some opposition. There's so many folks that didn't turn out tonight, that have really encouraged me to speak and have encouraged, you know, those in the neighborhood to turn out. You know, I understand that the board has wide discretion around these existing bylaws, and I know that exceptions are made, and sometimes those are both logical and sound and potentially result in wins all around, so I get the purpose of this board, I certainly respect that. But it doesn't seem like it's the case here, and I think, you know, I've been in this neighborhood for 10 years, and these last couple months have really just been challenging for, you know, a number of reasons within the neighborhood, but, you know, I want to preserve the neighborhood that we have, and, you know, obviously, I wish the Gibbs the best. It's an interesting predicament that we have here, and I think cases have been argued on, or arguments have been made on both sides, so I think you have a difficult decision. But please do protect our historic library community. You know, we fell in love with it when we moved in in this neighborhood, and we decided to make a home here, and I, you know, I just thank you for that and the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Leslie Kulpinski, and I'm from 19 Little Road. And as Mark said, we live in a charming old neighborhood in which no new houses have been built since the 60s. Now, there is a proposed new home in our area, and it's projected to be approximately 1,900 square feet. If you just cross Lyman Road, numbers from Mass Ave all the way up, numbers 15, 23, 31, and 41, houses are between 1,700 and 1,807 square feet, and are each built on a quarter-acre lot, and have great curb appeal. Most houses in this area that are 1,700 feet or above are on a larger lot. They are. 15 Lyman Road, 1,698 on .27, so just over a quarter of an acre. 23 Lyman, 1,703, .23 acres. I'm just going to keep saying a quarter of an acre instead of all these decimals, because they're all right around there. 23, 31 Lyman Road, 1,807, it's on a quarter of an acre, .23. 41 Lyman Road, 1,754, on a .24 acre lot. The other thing that, the, there's three, there's a large house in our neighborhood, and it's, one of the largest houses in the neighborhood is 11 Herrick Road at 1,893. 11 Little Road is 2,035. However, it was built initially as a two-family home, so I just wanted to point that out. It is a larger home, but it was built as a two-family. And the new house is projected at 1,880, and it will be among the top three large houses in the neighborhood. And as Mark was saying, if you drive by, there's, you know, the 11 Herrick Road, and then there's a space where another very large house that approximately same size will go, and then there's a fence, and then the rules house. So another point that I would like to make is the land-to-house ratio. So my house at 19 Little Road is 7,070 square feet of land and 1,330 square feet of house, which is a five-to-one ratio. And the new house will be a 3.8-to-one ratio. It's just tighter, it's got a tighter feel to it. 10 Lyman Road has a 4.6-to-one ratio, of 4.6 land and one house. So the, you all know what ratios are, sorry. So again, 11 Little Road was built as a two-family, it's 3.65 to one, and the new house that they're proposing is 3.8 to one. There's a couple of smaller ratios, and 26 Herrick Road has a six-to-one ratio, 32 Herrick Road has a six-to-three ratio, 25 Herrick Road has a 5.9-to-one ratio, 12 Herrick is 4.4, and on we go. And so I did do some added work, as was requested at the last meeting. I did go and look at things differently. And it's not so much one size of one house, it's that it would place it within the top three biggest houses in our neighborhood, including the houses on Lyman that are on quarter-acre lots that are that large. So I guess what we're trying to say is, and I have a question for Mr. Zarico as well, we, it just feels tight, it's got a tight feel to it, that's all we're saying. So my question for Mr. Zarico.
Kindly address the board.
Maybe, okay, thank you. When did Mr. Zarico contrive or build or architect, I don't know the word for it, draw out, plan the newer home? When was that version etched out? When was the new version of the new home etched out, please?
I'm not sure I would follow the relevance of it. We had an application, and he has revised the application to include a new design.
So all I'm asking is, if you look at the little print on the bottom of the newer plan, it says March of 19, of 2019. So I just, that's only my question, is if Mr. Zarico went and the old, the initial version was made on March, whatever, 10th in 2019, I'm not sure I understand why the newer version was also dated on that same day. That's my question.
And again, I'm not following what the relevance would be in.
Okay.
In this case, we had had an application, it has been revised in order to try to satisfy the questions of the board and the gallery.
Okay. All I'm saying is that the revision was made back in March. That's all, my only point. Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
I'm Carol Sudner at 12 Little Road, and I just also wanted to share my opinion and concern about the density and the preservation of the neighborhood. I think everybody feels strongly about it because we all enjoy living in the neighborhood, accept it for what it is, and just want to maintain that. There's a quality of life there, and I think it's precious to everybody. So I do have concerns about the house size and proportion to the lot, and now the density of making two non-conforming lots added to a non-conforming lot neighborhood. I mean, we all know that's what it is because it's an older part of town. So those are my concerns, along with the butters, about the density and the quality and the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Mark Creedy, 18 Lyman Road. Just real quickly, I think it's an odd premise that we're applying a bylaw that did not exist to homes that were built in 1950 and 1960. So the fact that they're non-conforming seems very irrelevant to me in that context. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Paul, can I just, just want to add a couple of things quickly?
Certainly.
The thing that I, most, there's two things, I guess, that I want to, want to reply to through the chair. There's a clear suggestion here that, that I'm dishonest, and that I had this plan in my pocket and didn't bring it in at an earlier meeting for some reason, and I, to tell you the truth, I'm pretty offended by that. Fact of the matter is, I have a young man who's studying at Merrimack College who does my CAD work in my office. He's brand new to a CAD system. He took the old template, which. which had the same date, and when we revised the plan for this new submission, he didn't change the date. And he didn't change the address. He took the easy route and made a new plan on an old template. Nothing dishonest, nothing misleading, nothing was done back in March with this plan. This plan was completely and totally conceived of pursuant to the comments from the last meeting. And that's it. And I find, I mean, again, I just, you know, I think it's a little bit unnecessary for people to be searching for some reason to suggest that I'm dishonest about anything here or anywhere else in my business or personal life. I guess the other thing is, I guess I'd like to have some sense of whether or not the neighbors would support a house that's exactly the average size of all 26 homes in this neighborhood. It's no problem. Very easy. What we're trying to do with an 1,880 square foot house instead of a 1,600 square foot house, which is probably about the average, we're trying to acknowledge differences in lifestyle, differences in code requirements, differences in the way people live. That's all. We're not trying to overextend the, the dimensions. A new house has to be taller for the same house than an old house because the framing numbers that most of these homes were built with don't comply today with code. Neither does the basement head level clearance. So things do change. You can't, you can't build like we used to, mostly because it's illegal. That's why we have some of those changes. We've done what we could in a responsible way to try to scale things consistent with, particularly with the homes on either side of this. I don't know what the size of the house is to the left of it, but I, I could look at that. But certainly, it's not outsized from any street view. And again, I guess I would like to know, if it was identical in size to the average house in the neighborhood, would that get support? Or is that really not the issue? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will first say, I didn't see, I didn't get a perception of you being dishonest. I figured it was just a typo. It happens in the legal world. Don't go too hard on him when you see him tomorrow.
He is, he is awesome, and he's thinking about me and efficiencies of time.
Learning experience for him.
That's right.
And he'll never do it again.
He'll never do it again.
I mean, honestly, I mean, it, it's, it's
You'd be thankful he didn't name drop, or he didn't name drop on him.
No, well, he is, he is extremely talented and extremely conscientious, and I would do nothing but compliment him on everything he does.
Just tell him, double check his date. Is there a possibility, and I'm throwing this out there, is there a possibility to, to make the house smaller? And I think, and I'll have to now, seeing the new plan, drive by and try to visualize, because I'm a very visual person. I guess, for me, in a sense, I think there becomes a difference of whether it looks like a house is, you know, the lot, the lot size is what the lot size is, right? There's nothing you can change about that anywhere across the board in your 26 houses. I think one of the things I do look at is, is the house going to literally look like it's busting at the seams of the lot? So I kind of wonder, is there a possibility of making the house, and like I say, I now have to go and try to visualize, okay, if this house is here, is it going to look like it's busting at the seams, even though, you know, lot size is similar to other lot sizes, and that aspect of it has a similarity? So is there the ability to shrink this a little?
Yes, of course. Of course there is. You know, the, and, you know, if that's, if that's something that makes people more comfortable with it, we're very creative with, with these things. I mean, we can, we can shrink it down if there's, if that's a, if that's a, a priority. But again, in terms of, you know, the, the comment of bustling at the seams, just to put it in perspective, this would be the only house, I think, in all 26 of those that complies with setbacks. So in terms of pushing the envelope, or pushing the green space, or pushing the, you know, the, the
The seams.
The dimensions, this would be, I think, and again, I could be wrong, there may be a house in there or two that comply with all the setbacks, but I don't think there's any. So, so the answer to your question is yes. That could be done.
Is it visually a house on that board that's 1,800 square feet?
I, I don't know the dimensions. I don't know the square footage of each of those homes.
So, Tom?
But I, I would imagine that this is probably the 1,800 square feet anyway. I know this one is more than, I'm not sure.
I think the yellow one's the same house. Oh, it's the same house as the one we have now, or the, the one being built. This one, this is currently in the construction house.
So, Tom, I made a point of driving through the neighborhood because I wanted to really understand, you know, be empathetic on, on both sides. And when we talk about setbacks, I mean, I want to clarify something, but this, this house meets setback, but it nets 30.7 feet. Is that, this is what I see on your diagram here?
That's correct, yes.
And it's, what, as, what I observed, it looked like this house would be, I mean, it looked as though most of the houses, and I think, I, I think you just echoed this a moment ago, but I noticed most of the houses seemed to be like Lot 11, closer to the street, whereas this house is now, which is now further back, which I would think would be a good thing in the neighborhood, meaning third, it's further back from the street. It's not right on the street. A lot of those houses seem to be pretty close to the street. This house has a little bit of, there's a little bit of space between the street and the house at 30.7 feet. I guess, my point is, as I hear the discussion about this, as I drove around, I noticed most of them were, were closer to abutting the street, and then this house would be abutting the street.
That's, that's correct. And, and I think it's safe to say, just looking at, again, this is the assessor's templates. This is the assessor's map. The proposed house would definitely be the furthest from the street of anything in that neighborhood. Now, having said that, that isn't always necessarily designed desirable. I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of neighborhoods, I mean, particularly more inner cities, where, where you're actually, you can't have a setback that's greater than five feet, for instance, because they want that, that consistency of setback. For instance, you know, in Portland and in Amesbury, in downtown areas where, where they want, where they want the, the structures to be close to the pedestrian element, you know. But, again, in this neighborhood, that would, this would be the furthest back from the street, for sure.
I guess I perceive that as an asset.
Yep.
Certainly.
Oh, I don't know if this is on.
It just records. It doesn't.
Okay.
There's no speaker here.
This is going to be difficult for me, so I, I might be emotional during some of it, but I just feel like I need to say it for myself and for my family and for my kids. You know, we bought that house on 11 Herrick Road 20 years ago. We had no idea it had an extra lot. The original owner's son said, oh, you got an extra lot here. You have to pay taxes on it separately, but it's an extra lot. And we were like, that's great. We were just hoping to have a big yard for our kids, which we were able to do. Harrison's 21, and Hannah's 18. And we paid taxes on it every year. We just had the biggest yard in the neighborhood. And we let everyone in the neighborhood play in that yard, even when we weren't there. It was open to everybody. And we were broke bringing up our kids, but we loved living on 11 Herrick Road. It was old. I had no closet space. But we loved every inch of it. And it wasn't 1,850 square feet. It was 1,750 square feet because it just burnt down to the ground. So I know how big my house was. It was 1,700 square feet. I wouldn't be here if last September 13th didn't happen. I would have loved to have given my kids that lot, or maybe built someday like that wonderful guy's doing for his elderly parents in addition, because I have the extra yard. But it's no longer a nest egg. It's a necessity for us because Columbia Gas didn't make us as whole as they should have. Did I want to bring my burnt wedding dress with my kids' toys all melted together to show you guys today? Because they get to bring their demonstrations. I would have loved to do that, but I know it's not about that. But unfortunately, you have to hear it. I would love to keep that yard. We just, we had a cookout a week before the gas explosions, and we used every square inch of that yard, and we used every square inch of my house. And it had a hot pink bathroom that we all showered in. And my kids want the exact same thing that he's building us. We could have built a McMansion on those three lots that didn't apply to any of them, but we wanted the same exact house to match the neighborhood. My kids wanted their bedrooms in the exact same space. And that's what he's going to do for us. We were thinking of the neighborhood, and we were thinking of the neighbors. And if someone else can live in this neighborhood, why not? We are living on little postage stamps. Can we be honest here? I am one house away from Mass Ave and Waverly Road. I hear the traffic. I hear the sirens, and I love it. We bought there because it was affordable. I don't have wildebeest running through my yard. I'm off of Mass Ave. There's no puffing clovins nesting in my green space. It's a big yard. And every time someone comes over, they say, wow, it looks like a house should be here. I said, I know, but we were just lucked out because we got an extra lot. I have no idea if we'll ever be able to build on it, but I'd like to save it for my kids or something. But here we are. I have no more house. I have nothing that my kids have. We lost everything, including our pet. And we are trying to be strong, and we're trying to give them and us back in the neighborhood that we love. Why do I give someone else another chance to be in that neighborhood? It's another little postage stamp. We're all trying to live our best life in our little space. Maybe that one of your parents could buy that house. Maybe a neighbor's friend could buy that house. Give somebody the opportunity to live in this amazing neighborhood. It's never going to be the desirable library area. We didn't buy Out Country. We bought off of Mass Ave because it was nice and it was affordable. That's, that's all. It's just another lot that someone else could be lucky enough to live in and have a wonderful backyard. And their kids can go to Times at school. It will be a great house for another great family. And we'll have to play catch with my kids in the backyard now. And I hope it does get approved because we've made our peace with what we had. It's gone. We only have to move forward. It's not a nest egg anymore. It's a necessity. And this guy did not have to build our house. He has better fish to fry. But he wanted to build our small little house again, our 1,800 square foot house. He wanted to do that for us. And he, and I, and Bill, it all came together with this extra lot. And he said to us, no matter what happens with this lot, no matter what happens if it doesn't get approved, I'm still going to build your house. I'm not going to leave you. And he's doing that. We're in a crowded neighborhood, a wonderful crowded neighborhood, let somebody else live there. It's not sympathy we want anymore. Sympathy is feelings of pity and sorrow. I'm just asking for empathy, which is the ability to understand what somebody else is going through, and maybe what they would do if they were sitting on three lots. We could have just left town and had a contractor come and build three townhouses, and we didn't. We're staying. We're building the same house. And we're, we're hoping that someone else gets to live in our extra lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Comments or ideas?
I think we just have to get the legal question.
Nothing else?
I mean, I just want to say, for the record, that I think that this design is a vastly improved design over the one that we had on the last occasion here. And, you know, I had been one of the people that suggested that I was less interested in keeping the lot lines fixed where they are and more in having sort of a, a, a more proportional design of the two, two now newly designed lots. And I think this is a step forward. That's, that's basically all I have right now.
Thank you. Anything else?
My question is, I mean, the difference between the 1,880 and the 1,600, that is the average, 280, I don't know if I did my math right.
Tell me.
It, it is month end for me at work, so I'm getting this all in my head. So is that going to be that huge of a difference to the neighborhood? I mean, if it's, is, I'm just concerned, is, is there something that they want? Nothing there? Or is compromise? I'm, I'm just confused at that notion of, I mean, if they come back with 1,600 square feet, is, are the issues going to be?
Are you asking?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
I want to be calm.
Absolutely.
Which is very important.
We're going to, we're going to need all commentary to come to the microphone so that it can be recorded, please.
Sure.
That was heartbreaking, Steve, so I'm very sorry.
I don't want it to be heartbreaking. I want to just be honest.
Let's be honest. The home sold 20 years ago, pretty much, in our estimation, about two or three years after the bylaw was passed. It was not a built-up lot.
I don't think that's what I asked. Yeah. I mean, I understand the bylaw.
Let's see if this.
Okay.
I think you got, you got your answer. The answer was not given to you directly, but I think you got
I get it. I guess I read between.
Why don't you rephrase a question to the other lady?
Oh. I think, in all honesty, if it was a smaller house, I talked it over with a woman from Andover who's a lawyer, who works with people who are trying to develop land. I, Whitmore, I think is her last name. I met her. I didn't bring her card. And I, and she said, what you're trying to say is a more reasonable lot. And I said, yes. So 1,800 square feet is really not the average. It's just not. My house is 1,330 square feet. It, it's not, it's not possible that 1,800 is
I didn't hear anybody say that 1,880 was the average.
Oh, I thought 1,800 was the average.
1,600 is what's
1,600 is the average.
Okay, I'm sorry. My bad. My bad. We feel the Gibbs are great people, and they're good neighbors, and there's nothing personal here. It's not personal, you know. And I, when I asked the question about Tom's thing, it was just a question. It was
It wasn't implying anything. It was, has to be safe to ask questions is my... I just feel like there has to be a safe atmosphere where anybody can ask any question and not it not be taken as an offense because that's not how I meant it. It wasn't, I just noticed that the dates were the same. I just thought I should ask about it. I thought it was due diligence to ask. Better to ask than not to ask. There were no stupid questions, was my understanding. So I had no intention of making anybody feel bad when I asked that. It was just a question. So...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think her question was this. And Ellen, excuse me for speaking there. If that house was 1,400 square feet instead of the 1,800 square foot, is that what you're trying to ask? Would you still object to a 1,400 square foot house?
No, I believe...
That house being a lot smaller?
I believe in my explanation with that I was speaking to that lawyer. And she said, what you're trying to say is a more reasonable house.
But what is a more reasonable house?
What is a more reasonable house?
Okay.
And I just took 1,400 as a number. I think Ellen was trying to say, if they reduce the size of the house, could all of you people be happy? Or you just don't want the house there? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, here's my honest answer.
Okay.
I would prefer no house, but 1,400 square feet, I would not oppose.
Okay. That is what you're trying to say.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Remind me your name?
I'm sorry?
Remind me, your name?
Carol Sumner.
Thank you.
I think everybody's emotions are running high here because everybody cares so deeply about the neighborhood and where we live and maintaining it. And the quality of it and just even like Mrs. Gibbs mentioned, loved being there, even though the houses are small. It has a community feel. And I don't think anybody has an objection of another family coming into the community. I think the objection is, I'll speak for me. Other people can say what they want. But I don't think any house there would be okay with me. Only because it would make it more denser. What I'm saying in preserving it is keeping it the way it is. And because it is so dense, I don't want to see it get any denser. So if it was 1,400, if it was 1,100, if it was 1,000, it was 500...
You just don't want a house?
I just don't want a house there.
Yeah, I get it. That's it.
That's just it.
Hi, Jen Fraser Rule, 25 Herrick. And again, it's nothing personal, but just because of where my house is and they've observed, you know, the bare minimum that they have to with the distance from our house, I personally don't want a house there. And I'm so sorry for the Gibbs and everything they've been through, but I also have to advocate for my family and look out for my family.
Which house is where it's your house located? On the map. Like, so if you're looking at the green, if you're looking at the green boxes, where's your house?
Okay, I don't know. I'm 25 Herrick. I'm on the corner. I don't know.
Well, he's 17, right?
We're neighbors. We're right next to each other.
Right, you're buddy each other.
So then... The attorney at this place, the...
Is it the house?
This is my house in there right here.
So is it the house to the right, Mr. Gibbs?
To the left.
To the left, right?
So if I'm looking, what you're holding in your...
So this is my side yard.
Looking at that doesn't do anything for me. I'm trying to figure out where you are on the map.
To the north, to the north and to the west.
Okay.
So there's the fence between...
Yeah, so this is the fence that divides my yard from the big yard.
That fence is what separates the two houses.
Yeah, this fence.
Separate.
The house and the empty lot.
Yeah, there's a fence. Okay. So she's on the other side of the fence.
Yes.
Got it.
Got it. Okay. Personally, I wouldn't be asking for you to go down to 14. I think there's, do you understand?
I use 14 just to throw a number at that.
No, well, and I just want to, I just ask if you can, you know, take a little shave to it just to get an idea. Because we do, you know, there obviously is the conflicting of the neighbors and what the average is looking at. And in some cases, the more you can kind of cut the baby in half, for lack of a better word, the better. But I wouldn't... And I might stand alone on that. Which is fine. I'm used to standing alone. I would just see if it's possible. And it'd still be something that is financially able to be done. I think 14 is a stretch, especially if we are looking at an average of something along the lines of 16.
If I can just respond and address that. I'm perfectly happy to, again, you know, in a perfect world, I mean, what I try to do is make everybody happy, knowing that I can't possibly do it. I build homes for a living. It's what I do. That creates conflict for some people, people who already have homes. But not for the people who don't. I'm perfectly happy to spend the time, go back and calculate what the average size is and design a house that's exactly the same as the average size in the neighborhood of those 26 homes. I mean, it's a good cross-section of single levels, of bungalows, of capes, of multi-stories. I think, you know, having said that, you know, the house directly across the street from this is a two-story colonial. The house on either side of it is a two-story Dutch colonial. To put a bungalow in there would be, not unlike the Wizard of Oz house. You know, it would be out of scale and proportion with the houses on either side of it again, which is what we were trying to get away from. So, you know, we certainly can do that. It's no problem to do that. Because people are desperate for homes, particularly smaller homes. So it's not an issue. It's not a concern. At some point, we start thinking, well, is it financeable for that buyer? Because as you all know, I mean, insurance companies insure at a particular rate. Banks lend at a particular rate. I mean, just being rational, it has to be a home that has a reasonable per square foot value. Or nobody can buy it because they can't get it financed. So it's got to be a rational balance of all of those things. But I'm sure if the average home in the neighborhood is 1,500 or 1,600 square feet or so, then we can certainly, you know, I mean, again, trying to make, trying to make, be as accommodating as possible. Other than just suggesting that they abandon, you know, their property.
If you were to shrink the square footage down, is this, the look of this going to change that dramatically? Because it seems as if this design is something that would fit into the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it is. I mean, I think it's the right style. I think it's the right era. It's era-specific. It goes with everything around it. You know, again, it's 26 feet 2 inches tall. It's not a tall house. I mean, it's taller than a bungalow or a cape because it's a two-story. But it's just very similar to any other two-story Dutch colonial colonial in terms of that dimension. You know, it would probably, it would probably shrink to 2 to 4 feet. I mean, I think if we shrink, if we shrink the width, then I think we're getting back to that disproportionate look that we don't want to have, that looks a little top-heavy. So we could shrink the depth. And certainly still have a, you know, have a structure that looks like what you see, that fits in the neighborhood in scale and proportion.
Well, don't forget, some of my board members might not agree with me on giving it a little bit of a shave, so...
No, no, that's okay. I understand.
You know, I owned a lot of apartments in Lawrence. And I had 25 apartments that were affected by the gas crisis. Okay? And it wasn't easy dealing with them. Oh, God knows. It was horrible. And thank God I had nothing to your extent, but I feel for you.
Thank you.
Honest to God, I feel for you. And the way I feel, anything we can do to try and make your life more normal. Bring it back a little bit. Because the damn gas company won't do it for you, right? They're awful, awful. That's all I'm going to say.
Ellen, what's your two cents on the size?
Pardon me?
I mean, I just want to say, I mean, my parents were affected by the, my parents were on Main Street. They were affected by the gas issue as well. So, I mean, it is, and I do actually sympathize and empathize with you as well. So, I mean, I understand. So for me, and I think if you put it down to, like you said, 13, 14, it's still, as you heard from the neighbors, it doesn't matter. It's, you know, I mean, no house is what is requested. So for me, I mean, if you're going to take 280 feet off or 200 feet off, is it going to make that much of a difference? I'm not quite sure.
Well, that's why, that's why I was very deliberate about asking the question. Because typically, again, what I do, in most cases, and I've built hundreds of homes, in most cases...
And I permeated a few of your homes.
Yes, absolutely. But in most cases, people just don't want anything. And I understand and I respect everybody's, you know, opinion about that. But, you know, what we're supposed to do, what I'm supposed to do, and what we're supposed to do as a community is, we're supposed to put houses where they belong. Now, clearly, there's a difference of opinion as to where they belong. And I respect and understand that too. But to a lot of people, again, not the people who are immediately around it, I understand that. But to most people who would go through this neighborhood, they would say, a house belongs there. I think most people would. And what we're told to do by the town, by the state, by the federal government, by all the environmental responsibilities and regulatory authorities, is put homes where there's water, where there's sewer, where there isn't huge lots with tons of pesticides and other environmental contaminants being brought into the, you know, into the system. This is, this is, this is an intelligent place for a house. And this is what we're, this is what we're told as professionals in our industry and what communities are told by the state and by the federal government. This is what they're, this is what we're told to do. We're trying to do it.
I mean, on the other hand, I have to respect for, respect you guys in the community coming out here every meeting. And, you know, this is your neighborhood too. So, and everyone has a voice. I mean, you know, it is a safe place to say what you feel and how you feel. And it is your neighborhood in the end. It's all your neighborhoods in the end that you have to live there. We go home and, you know, it's not for us to look and see at, but it's for you guys. And I respect you all for coming out here and voicing your opinion.
And for what it's worth, I mean, I do too. I mean, the thing of it is, I, the fact that, you know, that we're trying to do whatever, whatever can be done. You know, short of just abandoning the idea, we're trying to do and accommodate any opinion and any suggestion and any set of priorities other than just know. I mean, because the just know, for me, doesn't, isn't, isn't fair. You know, I understand how everybody feels. But the reason why we're here multiple times and probably multiple times again, unless we're told to stop, is because we care about knowing it the right way.
All right, we are winding down and certainly risking going around in circles and continuing the same thought. So I'm going to take a quick last word and just ask, ask the applicant to examine the legal question. Appears as though we're headed for a motion to continue. I imagine that's right around the corner.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Not quite done, Ellen, thank you. Ask the applicant to take a look at that legal question. Take a look also at the, at stormwater management. Because I'm similarly a guy, lived in the library district for a number of years. And it's just plain wet and it's just plain dense. So I get that. Would ask you to take a good long look at that. I would suggest another, another couple of things. That sitting, sitting on the board, I don't consider it to be my job to be extraordinarily accommodating to anyone. It is my job as a member of the board to balance the interests of the applicant, of the neighborhood, of the community at large, being in the town of North Andover and the code as it is written. That's not always an easy job and it's not always anything that comes with an instruction manual. But I, for my part, and I believe that I can speak for the balance of the board members, do the best I can in that context with the information that we have and that the extraordinary participation that we get from the community. I share the concerns that the applicant has over what something that they, they thought they may have had, may have never wanted to develop and may have wanted to develop, but you just never know. And I agree, at the time, it was not a buildable lot. And it still isn't a buildable lot unless and until the lot lines move and you can get, you know, within some zone of comfortability with the entirety of the zoning board of appeals. So it seems like that there's an element of comfort, at least not opposition necessarily from the board, to want to continue to hear more about this, this project. As we're asking Mr. Zarek to carry on. Perhaps take a look at square foot or certainly take a look at stormwater and certainly take a look at the how much, how much zoning relief is triggered. Are there, are there new variances that are going to be required by moving the lot line? This being kind of a trial balloon before the board to see, get a sense of things. I would encourage the folks in the gallery to return on, assuming it's November 12th, that we could continue to, to take a look at the next evolution of this and certainly share additional opinions, thoughts, feelings. Feelings certainly, certainly may become more entrenched. They may become more flexible over time. You know, that's, that's always a variable that we, that we face. So it's my hope that the applicant comes together with something, something a little bit new in the, in the next month or so. It's my hope that the gallery comes in in order to examine that and share their opinions. And of course, we'll see the Gibbs next month. So with that, so that we don't carry on too much, I would ask, is there a motion?
Do I change my mind?
I'll make a motion to continue the...
Continue November 12th. Motion made. Motion seconded. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? We are continued to November 12th.
So I will not be here November 12th. I will be celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary.
I feel bad for her husband. Wait, you're in a room, right? No, I'm jealous. I hate that.
Which means, which means that we will...
No, you're not moving the meeting to accommodate me.
No, we're definitely not moving the meeting. But just, just that everybody knows who will be, who will be voting then. If Ellen is not here, then... Michael?
Okay.
Just so that everybody knows. Thank you very much. But I detail, I think the last item on the agenda...
20, the minutes, right?
It's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to bring it on.
For agenda, item was the minutes.
So Valerie, the last item on the agenda is the 2020 calendar. I don't have one in my packet. Did you bring them?
We got them.
They're in your original package.
We had them on the...
But you had revisions?
Yeah, I sent you a...
Yeah. They're in your original package. There's only that one revision.
Only that one revision? I sent something that was extraordinarily redlined, Valerie.
I know. I sent it back to you at the right day. So I, I mean, I just, I didn't think you wanted to bring it.
Well, we're voting on it, so we should have it.
Well, I can get it off my email.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move that to November as well. Is there a motion? Thank you. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? No, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.